It's called the regular scheduled meeting of the City Council of February 13th, 2012, the Well Call Place.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
City Clerk Patterson here. Council members Ratty absent, Lawson.
Here.
Smith absent, Carrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
City Attorney Chair Adams.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Okay, if you don't stand for the invocation today, we have the President of the Universal Society for Hinduism, Rajan Zed to give the prayer. Welcome Rajan.
Thank you.
I think it's on.
I will read from the ancient Hindu scriptures first in Sanskrit, then in English. Om Bhur Bhuvaha Swaha Tatsavitur Varenyam Vargo Dvasya Dhimahi Diyo Yona Prichodhyat. We meditate on the transcendental glory of the deity supreme who is inside the heart of the earth, inside the life of the sky, and inside the soul of the heaven. May he stimulate and illuminate our minds. Astoma Sadgamyam, Tamsoma Jyotirgamyam, Mritiyor Mamraktham Gamyam. Lead us from the unreal to the real, lead us from darkness to light, lead us from death to immortality. Anapexa Suchitra Taksha Udasino Gatabyatha Sarva Ambha Pratigye Yo Mad Bhakta Sanayam Priya. Speaking of true devotees, Lord says, "He is detached, pure, efficient, impartial, never anxious, selfless in all his undertakings. He is my devotee, very dear to me." Oh Lord, as public, as devoted public officials, guide us to these values. Trividam Naraka Saydam Dwaram Nasha Namah Tamah Kamakroda Stata Lobha Tasmada Tataryam Teajet. There are three gates to the self-destructive hell, that is lust, anger, and greed. Please help us, oh Lord, to renounce these three. Om Sahana Vavtu Sahana Obanaktu Sahaviren Karva Bahai Dejaswana Ava Diitamastu Ma Vidvisha Bahai. May we be protected together, may we be nourished together, may we work together with great vigor, may our study be enlightening, may no obstacles arise between us. Om Shanti, Shanti, Shanti. Peace, peace, peace be unto all. Om. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have comments from the public. I have no speaking cards anywhere in the public. I'd like to speak under public, comments from the public. Are you ready to go back there?
I'm having a little bit of a talk about this issue.
Okay, next is approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? If not, looking for a motion. Okay. Did you press a button?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Lawson.
Move to approve.
Second by Mr. Schmidt. Moved by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. To approve the agenda as outlined by staff, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Next is recommendation to approve minutes of the January 9th, 2012, and January 23rd, 2012 meetings. Any revisions or corrections?
Move to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Carrigan to approve the minutes of January 9th, 2012, January 23rd, 2012. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Okay, next we have proclamation, eyeglass collection month. And I'll read the proclamation. I believe we have the President, Mr. Jay Eldridge is here to accept? No? You got the wrong message. Okay. I'll go ahead and read it and then somebody can come up and speak for the group or whatever they want to do. City of Sparks proclamation. Whereas Lions Club International is a service organization with 1.3 million members in approximately 45,000 clubs in over 200 countries and geographical areas around the world. And whereas the District 46 Lions Club supports many local, national, and global service initiatives, including the prevent, prevention of blindness and advocacy of the blind and visually impaired. And whereas Lions Club members have collected more than 5 million pairs of used eyeglasses for distribution in developing countries. And whereas residents of Sparks are encouraged to donate their unused eyeglasses to benefit the visually impaired. Now therefore I, Gino, our Martini Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim February 2012, Eyeglass Collection Month, and encourage all citizens to participate in Eyeglass Collection Month and recognize the members of the District 46 Lions Club for their many contributions to our community. (APPLAUSE) Everybody wants to look over here with the camera. All right, we do a couple. Just use the regular. Yeah, just give your name for the record.
Okay. Good afternoon, I am Sarad Zutchi. I'm at the Sparks National Lions Club, which is District 46. These are all my fellow Lions from different clubs in Sparks and Reno. One of time, thank you, Mr. Mayor and the Councilmen for helping us get some publicity. We don't want the Lions to be the biggest little secret anymore. So please tell your friends to call us, contact us on the website, get the glasses to us. And unless anybody else has worked, that's all I have.
Look for these collection boxes at various sites throughout Reno and Sparks.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you folks for all you do for our community.
Thank you.
Okay, next is presentation in that day by the Sparks Citizens Advisory Committee. Adam?
Mr. Bonine.
Mayor, make it.
Do you want to use a PowerPoint?
I didn't bring a PowerPoint, which is good news, I believe.
Eddie Bonine, Chairman of your Sparks Citizens Advisory Committee.
Mr. Mayberry told me I could bring a PowerPoint and I had 20 minutes. I chose not to bring the PowerPoint and I'm cutting it down to three, if that's okay with everybody.
No, you know what.
Oh kid, okay. Anyway, first and foremost, I want to thank the Council, Mr. Mayor and the Council for giving us the opportunity to just give you a brief update of what the Advisory Committee has been doing. First of all, though, I'd like to thank all of you for your leadership and your dedication and your timeless efforts representing all in our cities but our respective wards and we definitely appreciate that. And also thank you for selecting us to serve. It's been very educational and very rewarding in working with the individual whom you selected to serve on our committee and we thank you for that. Also, we'd be remiss if I didn't thank Mr. Mayberry, the city liaison, to our committee. Adam, thank you for your timely efforts and continually keeping us abreast of what's needed and what is requested of us. If you recall, about a year ago this month, you gave us a charge as a committee to assist in the process of identifying those essential services and working to give you some information so you can make those difficult decisions in which you needed to make for fiscal year 2011-2012 budget. We changed our format of meeting quarterly, if you recall, to meeting monthly and had the privilege of meeting with the leadership from the departments in the city who came in and gave us numerous information and a lot of good information and educated us on the ins and outs and operations of the city to assist. In that process, we surveyed our constituents within our respective wards, we met monthly, we had our own town halls, we did what we could to bring some information forward to all of you to assist and hopefully that was a tool that we would continue to use in the future and hopefully it was one that we thought was successful. We returned to our quarterly meetings in October of this past year where we hosted a workshop in the very popular maps of the wards and the zoning. It was very informational and we appreciate the hard work and effort by staff on that as well as those committee members and citizens that joined us with that. Again, it was very educational and we appreciated that. We also had the election slash election of officers for another, continuing of another year. Mr. Byer has been renewed as our Secretary. Assistant Chair is Lorraine Scherzer and I have been chosen to continue to chair this particular committee for another year and it's my privilege and I thank them for that. In January, this past January, we also met and had a State of the City presentation by Tracy Dominguez, City Parks and Rec Department. We feel it's necessary at this point to go back through departments as they're available to find out and update what's going on since we've made the decision that you've made for our city in those respective departments and how it's affected them or not and how we've moved on with that. In March, which is March 8th, at the Larry D. Johnson Community Center, we'll have our next meeting at 5:30 and we've asked City Manager Kerry to come forward and we'll do a presentation, basically an up-to-date of what's going on with our present budget. At my request to Mr. Mayberry, I've been informed that Assistant Manager, Mr. Driscoll, has been doing a lot of really good research for shared services in other communities and doing some research. So we're gonna put together a communication to Adam to ask that you come forward, possibly in our June meeting. Steve to do, you'll give us some information and updates on that as well. I just want to thank, again, thank all of you for what you do for us in your positions and we look forward to continue working with you. I'd be remiss at this time if I didn't thank our Ward Four Representative, Mr. Carrigan. I want to thank you for what you do for us and there specifically Wingfield Springs where we reside and thank you for your mentorship and what you do and your dedication for Ward Four as well, as your representative for the committee. This time I'd entertain any questions, comments, concerns, or just give me the nod that my time's up and I'll step aside.
Questions for Mr. Bonine. Julia?
Well, I had the pleasure of attending a few of your meetings and you guys are very well organized and the meetings are pertinent and on time. One thing I love, I love a meeting that goes quickly and gets a lot done. So you guys are doing an excellent job on the CAC.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Very few of those. Goes quickly and on time.
We try.
Meetings, yeah.
And I was gonna say, we get something accomplished.
Exactly. Julia?
I was curious when we first put the committee together, I believe it was Councilman Schmidt and maybe one other person had appointed students to participate in the process and I was just curious how that worked out and if it makes sense or doesn't make sense and are any of the students still there? What's the status?
It makes sense. It worked out well. The student in which Councilman Schmidt appointed graduated from Reed High School. So we're in the process of putting out nominations or working with respective wards and where those schools are to get another student representation on our board. We are working with Adam and getting that information, so that's one of the things that's on our March agenda and we'll start the process. The, I guess, and looking at in the grand scheme of things, we probably should try to appoint that person at the June meeting so that they, we have them for a year versus just a short, shorter period of time and rethink in the process. But yes, ma'am, it's been very successful. They brought some good information to the table and I'm, hopefully, that the experience on the committee also helped the student when they left school and went on to whatever they were gonna do.
And so that would be my question is rather than having a council member appoint a student as one of theirs during the process that doesn't really align with the school year, if it makes sense, like we have a spot for the Advisory Committee for the disabled and they're three standing, I can't remember exactly what they are now, that we have a student spot that is open and on perhaps a slightly different timeline?
And the position I hold with the NIA, I have access to our other activities and student councils across our city, so I can work cooperatively with those sponsors and those people that work directly with the student council so we can get some good people in.
I agree with you. It sounds like a great idea. I don't know what we have to go through to make that happen.
Well, I'll have to take a look at the rules and see. So maybe, Adam, you can take a look at that and maybe shoot us out an email and advise us what we need to do to fix that or if we want to fix it, we can agendize it on a future meeting. Anyone else? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if my mic is working today or not. Just go ahead and, for the Councils, and Mr. Bonine, you're very complimentary to Angela who was there for the year, her first year, I think she was there for a little bit more than a year until she did graduate. Just to give you an update with Angela, she applied for an internship with the Governor's Office and being on the Sparks Citizen Advisory Board was a very big point. I believe Mr. Mayberry was asked for a letter of recommendation myself and I know when she went to, for the internship, that was a big part, that she was part of that, so I think it's important to keep that going. Second candidate we had, I reappointed her with another student as an alternate. That one didn't work out too well, the student didn't have time for it. So I think if we, if we want to go to the point of nominating students to be sitting members on all of our boards commission, we're gonna need the support of either a principal or a government's affairs teacher or something in one of the high schools to be our liaison to the City Council because the amount of time spent by myself to look, try to get students involved, I can't do it for more than one committee. Obviously, I wasn't able to do it. I just appointed my third person just a month ago at the turn of the year and so it's a lot of time. So I would support that as long as we have some system in place to be able to do that.
And may I clarify? I don't think I spoke very clearly. I was not suggesting that we put a student, although I like the idea, on every committee. What I was saying is that on the Sparks Citizens Advisory Committee, we have specific slots for a delegate from our other committees and rather than having you take all that effort and finding that student, making it a student spot that is regardless of ward, it's a standing position just like, I think it's a Parks and Rec Commissioner and a Planning Commissioner and.
Advisory Committees.
To the Sparks Citizens Advisory Committee, as opposed to it being one of our ward appointments.
Mike?
Yeah, Eddie, thank you for all your hard work and also the Citizens Advisory Committee. You guys, like Ed said, were on time and that's exactly what I wanted to see, is somebody that would advise us because it's tough for us to make a decision and then three months after we make a decision, the Sparks Citizen Advisory Committee, and then advises us on that decision. So thank you for that. I think that we made the rules up for the Sparks Citizens Advisory Committee. Is that not true, Adam?
Yes.
So then let's just bring it back at the end of this month and put a student on there. It's our rules. You know, let's not beat around the bush. How about putting it on the agenda for our last meeting in February and we'll stick a student slot on there? And then we could work out what, you know, the problem, you know, the potential problem that Ron's talking about, but let's just put the spot on there.
And if it's possible, I'd like to try to prevent you from having to do a lot of labor with this and we can kind of take the lead and try to get some names to you, whether it be in respective wards or basically come back with some candidates with some resumes and why they want to do that and maybe that would solve the, solve the labor on your end and then we can get somebody in there and it save you from doing that. We can take the lead on that, if that's okay with everybody.
Yeah, I would say you're much closer than we are to the students to school and if you could work it from that end, it would probably make a lot more sense.
Consider it done, sir.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ed. For me too. Thank you very much. Appreciate all your hard work. Okay, next is 4.3, presentation on I-80 Rob Drive to Vista Boulevard Design/Build Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, excuse me, let me start over. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council Members. For the record, my name is Jeff Larue. I am the Department of Transportation's Project Manager for the I-80 Design/Build Project, which is going on between Rob Drive and Vista Boulevard. Today I'd like to provide a project update, review the 2011 accomplishments of the project, talk about upcoming construction in 2012, and then address any concerns or questions that you have at the end of the presentation.
Just put your phone number up there.
Yeah. It's on there. It's on there, yeah. Okay. All right, so this slide right here shows the anticipated schedule for 2012. To highlight some of the activities going on in Sparks, you can see at the Rock Eastbound Off-Ramp and the East McCarron Eastbound Off-Ramp, there'll be work going on in July. I say July, I mean July-ish because we intended to start the construction season for this season in March, but due to the weather being so cooperative, we've allowed Granite to start work a little bit early. So some of these dates might actually happen sooner than you see on the schematic. There's also work going on at Sparks Boulevard towards August and then the widening between East McCarron and Vista Boulevard, early, early in the construction season this year. To highlight some of the 2011 accomplishments, we've replaced the concrete paving in between Keystone Avenue and 4th Street in the westbound direction. We've had drainage improvements throughout the project limits. We've started our widening between East McCarron and Vista Boulevard. We've deployed intelligent transportation systems in the corridor and what that consists of is the dynamic message signs that you see out there, radar detectors to note the speed the vehicles are traveling, and then we can put messages up on the dynamic message signs that alert you of accidents, travel times, things like that. We employ or deployed some construction ramp meters at Keystone, Virginia, and Wells and that was due to, we noticed some really tight merging with I-80 traffic, so rather than letting all the cars merge onto I-80 at once, we broke up the platoon and metered them on one at a time. As you've seen out there probably, I'm sure, some of the loop ramp preparation at Sparks Boulevard, we've had some early landscape and aesthetic improvements. As the westbound lanes were closed, we did some painting of the bridge structures out there. There's a website with live traffic cameras, that's at keeprenosparksmoving.com and if you go to that website, you can click on cameras, that will show you still shots that are updated every two to three minutes throughout the project limits. There's new LED lighting throughout the project limits and safety and drainage improvements at Rob Drive. Here's a picture of the new westbound pavement. This is at Keystone Avenue looking back to the east towards the spaghetti bowl. This is the widening between East McCarron and Vista Boulevard that I spoke of. The intent of this is to create auxiliary lanes between on-ramps and adjacent off-ramps to allow for longer merging distances for the folks that want to get onto I-80. This is our landscape and aesthetic concepts. The Trucking Meadows Crossroads is a theme. We have gateways as you enter into Sparks from the east and Reno from the west. We have monuments that select locations that interchange, sound wall treatments primarily around the spaghetti bowl, tank farm screens, which you'll see just east of Jonas Wagon Nugget at that tank farm, and then vegetation enhancements throughout the corridor. This is our 2012 timeline, which I told you, we have the traffic switch on here slated for March and we're already beginning that traffic switch now, so like I said, hopefully the weather will keep on cooperating and everything will get pushed up and will be complete sooner than later. So then the construction will go on after that. In September, August, September, we'll have I-80 eastbound and westbound lanes back to their new configuration. Landscape and aesthetics will follow to hopefully be finished in October with a project completion date of December 2012. For our traffic control, we'll have the same scenarios we had last year, except everything will be located on the westbound lanes. So we'll have two lanes in each direction open to traffic. We'll have some long-term ramp closures at the eastbound Wells Avenue on and off ramps, the eastbound 4th Street off ramp, the westbound 4th Street on ramp, and then we're looking at closing Center Street eastbound on ramp for six to eight weeks. We're still working with the city of Reno on that. Six to eight weeks is a long time to close that ramp, so we're trying to work with them to come up with some alternative solutions. And then we'll be reaching out to the public with extensive one-on-one meetings to stakeholders, businesses, city councils, et cetera. Here's the 2012 construction. We're looking at replacing the concrete paving between Keystone and 4th, just like we did in the westbound direction, in the eastbound direction. Geometric improvements and resurfacing from I-80 eastbound to southbound 395. Everybody knows that's the heavy movement that goes towards Carson City from the west and so we're trying to clean that up. Widening and resurfacing Rob Drive westbound off ramp and resurfacing the Rob Drive eastbound on ramp. Restriping West McCarron eastbound on ramp. Widening and restriping the I-80 westbound Virginia Street off ramp. We're gonna install permanent ramp meters at the eastbound Center Street on ramp and the Wells Avenue eastbound on ramp. Right now, we're currently looking at the feasibility of also having a ramp meter permanent at Keystone eastbound on ramp. We're researching that right now. We should have some preliminary results in the next three to six weeks. And then we're gonna widen and restripe I-80 eastbound Wells on ramp for the ramp metering and that's going to be there. This is a little more Sparks specific right here. We'll be completing the I-80 East McCarron to Vista Boulevard towards the medium. We'll finish the construction of the loop ramp at Sparks Boulevard. In addition to that, we'll be restripping Sparks Boulevard on top of the deck to allow for three lanes northbound and two lanes southbound with a long left turn pocket for the southbound, eastbound movement. Additionally, the eastbound off ramp will have three lanes that can turn left to go north, so that'll be a nice improvement, keep the traffic from backing onto I-80. Then we're gonna restripe the East McCarron eastbound on ramp, widen the Rock Boulevard eastbound off ramp, and then we'll have striping improvements throughout the corridor. This, the restripping of the East McCarron eastbound on ramp, that should actually be the eastbound off ramp for some of the widening that we're doing at the bottom of the ramp to store cars better. And with that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And there's my phone number right there, too.
Questions for Jeff?
Go ahead, Mike.
Jeff, on, this is the complaint I get all the time and I'm glad you put your phone number on there because I'm gonna send it to you. But when you're, when you're on North 395 and you're trying to go on to East 80, heading towards Sparks, you know what I'm talking about right there by the?
4th Street.
Yeah. You get stuck in that lane and it's, you know, and if you try to get into the lane that keeps going, it's really hard if somebody else is going. Well, what is that gonna look like? In other words, you know what I'm talking about? If you, you get stuck in that lane because there's a 4th Street exit right there, trying to get over to the other two lanes that are heading east, if there's a car or a truck in that lane, you're pretty much doomed.
Yeah. You know, I don't know what the final configuration that's going to be for this season. I do know we're gonna be closing that eastbound off ramp, so I think that we carry a lane past that ramp and then it merges back down to two lanes before it gets east of 4th Street, but I will double check that.
Yeah, double check because while I'm getting complaints, it is, I'm just driving it myself, it is tough to get over.
Yeah, I just took it on the way here. Luckily, there were three lanes going through still, but I'll double check on that final configuration.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
A quick question on the red green light. What do you call that?
Ramp meters.
Ramp meters. And they're gonna be permanent? Is the Highway Patrol enforcing that at this point? I know they were at the beginning, but it seems to me it's getting more dangerous because I get to go downtown Reno a lot and people are not paying attention anymore.
Well, yeah, you're correct. We did work with NHP early on to stress the enforcement of those. Now that we're switching into the construction season for 2012, we're going to beef up that enforcement. So we'll be working with NHP to beef that up and.
Yeah, it's like kids, you have to remind everyone that they're there still.
Yeah.
The other question I have is for the switching from I-80 eastbound to southbound 395, that is a big congestion. Is there any plans to widen that so that there's two lanes going southbound on 395?
Well, what the plan is for the project, we actually are going to add a lane that starts just west of Keystone Avenue and that lane will carry all the way through to the, just past that. You know, I don't know what the final configuration of that's going to be for this season. I do know we're going to be closing that eastbound off-ramp, so I think that we carry a lane past that ramp and then it merges back down to two lanes before it gets east of Fourth Street, but I will double-check that.
Yeah, double-check because while I'm getting complaints, it is, I'm just driving it myself, it is tough to get over.
Yeah, I just took it on the way here. Luckily, there were three lanes going through still, but I'll double-check on that final configuration.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
A quick question on the red-green light. What do you call that?
Ramp meters.
Ramp meters, and they're going to be permanent? Is the Highway Patrol enforcing that at this point? I know they were at the beginning, but it seems to me it's getting more dangerous because I get to go downtown Reno a lot, and people are not paying attention anymore.
Well, yeah, you're correct. We did work with NHP early on to stress the enforcement of those. Now that we're switching into the construction season for 2012, we're going to beef up that enforcement, so we'll be working with NHP to beef that up and...
Yeah, it's like kids, you have to remind everyone that they're there still.
Yeah.
The other question I have is for the switching from I-80 eastbound to southbound 395. That is a big congestion. Is there any plans to widen that so that there's two lanes going southbound on 395?
Well, what the plan is for the project, we actually are going to add a lane that starts just west of Keystone Avenue, and that lane will carry all the way through to the, just past that off-ramp to go southbound to 395. So that coupled with the ramp meters, which will meter the traffic into I-80, and then we're also going to have two lanes that go towards the south that will taper into one lane before it gets to 395. So it'll still come out on as one lane to 395, but we're carrying two lanes up that ramp farther to try to keep that congestion off of I-80 itself.
It seems like that's continually congested, and there's, like, every day it seems like there's an accident there.
Yeah, that's a tough spot, and we're hoping that with the addition of those ramp meters at that location, that'll give our traffic management center over at Reno Roads the flexibility to slow those cars down from entering the system and allow for free-flowing traffic.
Overall, though, I got to commend you guys, you've done a great job keeping traffic moving, and a few times I have been on I-80 and seen congestion, and the assistance vehicles are there, Highway Patrol's notified right away, and it seems things get moving right back quickly within, you know, 30 minutes or so. So that part's good for all of us that get to travel around the Truckee Meadows a lot. So thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Jeff? Jeff, thanks for the update, appreciate it. Okay, let's move into consent items. Anybody want to pull a consent item? Okay, seeing none, looking for a motion. Mr. Carrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. Move for approval of consent items 5-1 through 5-6.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve the consent items. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Linda, are we working back there yet or not? Okay. Okay, let's move on to general business. 6.1, consideration and possible approval of a bid number 1112-013-PWP, number WA-2012-92, C Street Garage Rehabilitation Project.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm working on a new negotiating voice with my kids here.
How's that working out for you?
Still losing.
Yeah.
Still losing. Before you this evening is, again, an award to Q&amp;D Construction for the C Street Garage Rehab Project. This project was advertised on January 4th. During the bidding process, there were three addendums issued due to questions that were raised. Seven bids were received on January 25th and opened. After the bids were opened, after review by staff, unfortunately, six of these bids were deemed non-responsive due to specifications and/or not meeting the new guidelines by NRS. With that being said, Q&amp;D did submit a responsive, responsible bid. They are a qualified contractor based on their references. They've done ten projects of this nature, and their bid does come in below the engineer's estimate and within the city's budget. Based on that, staff is recommending award to Q&amp;D of the base bid, and we're also asking to look for award of alternate 1 and 2. It's a different coating that would go on the other two levels of the garage. With that, I can answer any questions you have.
Questions? Mr. Lawson.
Can you go into more detail what alternate 1 and 2 is?
Sure, absolutely. Alternate 1 and 2, with the base bid, what we were doing is putting like a polyurethane coating on the top level of the garage, the other two floors, and the ground floor, we're going to get basically a sand seal coating. It'll be grinding in a sand seal. Sand seal coat is expected to last probably around two years, but it does protect the surface. Not knowing what the bids would come in at, we added alternates to do the polyurethane coating on the other floors as alternates, 1, 2, and 3. With looking at the bids and looking at it, the polyurethane coating has a five-year warranty where the sand seal has a one. Expected life expectancy of the polyurethane coating is about 10 years. So based on looking at the life expectancy, the warranty period, it's a better bang for a buck for the city. Additionally, with the sand coating, sand seal coating, an expectancy of about two years, we'd have to come back in two years most likely and grind and redo this. Bringing somebody back in by a floor, we're looking at about $50,000 a floor to do that. Whereas right now, if I do a polycoating and I'm looking to get 10 years out of it and a five-year warranty, it's a better expense of our city funds in the staff's view.
And that was both alternate 1 and 2?
Yes, sir. Alternate 3 was a ground floor. We don't have enough in the budget for that, but that is more of a slab-on-grade rather than the other floors are elevated and act as a bridge. So with the ground floor being a slab-on-grade, hopefully what we're looking at is going to be easier to maintain and take care of.
Okay, that clears it up for me, thank you.
Mr. Carrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there a way on our bid form to put a big giant that says, "List yourself as a subcontractor," because now it's starting to cost us money? Because if there would have been a local guy, there would have been $150,000 under this bid on this one, and the next one, there would have been somebody $30,000 under the bid, and both of them are thrown out only because they didn't list themselves as subcontractors. What can we, I mean, this is starting to irritate me now.
Dan Maron, purchasing manager, contracts and risk manager for the record, excuse me. We've tried since this law has come into effect, and we've seen this issue. I'm happy to supply you copies of the forms that we have right now. I can tell you that with this bid, bold at the top, in bold, if bidder will perform any of the work required to be listed, bidder shall also list his name for such work in the space provided below.
And that's the reason that, what was it, six got thrown out? Because they didn't do that?
Correct, sir. And what we're seeing in terms of the industry is the general contractors get it. They've been through this, they've been, seen the pain. Q&amp;D's been party to other bids that have seen protests.
Well, Q&amp;D's probably loving it, that nobody else can read.
Well, the thing is, exactly, they've seen protests on this locally, we've seen lawsuits on this regionally. I can tell you that the public purchasing industry in Nevada is struggling with this. We had a meeting on this earlier today with respect to Nevada Public Purchasing Study Commission and all the issues we're seeing north and south. We keep beefing up our forms. I can tell you that in the interim, since this has happened, and the next agenda item has a very similar issue. All the plans for these projects sold out of my office. I sell them personally with very few exceptions, and now it's to the point where I ask every person buying into the plans, "Have you bid a project in the last six months at a public agency?" And if not, here's the page. Let me show you. Page eight of the bid document says you list yourself. It seems silly, just do it, because otherwise you've wasted your time. I use just that frank language.
Okay.
And even with that, sir, we've got a bid due later this week. I took a call from a contractor this morning, and I said, "Don't forget the self-listing rule." The what?
Yeah.
And what happens is you get the runners coming for the bid documents, and they're not communicating it to the estimator. So this is still a nasty cycle we're going through. We've done additional outreach to the AGC. I'm going to be working on a course offered via the AGC to their members and through their outreach that's going to be a, you know, how to fill out your bid document considering the new law. We've gone that far, we're hope to have that start rolling in March. But we're doing as much of public outreach as we can.
Yeah, don't get me wrong, I'm not getting on staff at all.
Oh, I understand.
I'm just saying that now it's starting to cost the citizens money because there were two other, or three other bids that were lower, and just because somebody can't read, you know, in bold, you know...
We had the example last month from the inter-local with City of Reno and that contract that went out of state because of, again, the self-listing rule. So we are certainly aware of it, and we communicate it to everybody we can. Chris's team has done the same with respect to, in cases where we have pre-bid meetings, guess what's at the top of the agenda? Self-listing rule. But again, you've got to get that information in front of the people that actually write and sign the bids.
Great. All right, just keep up the good work, and I guess you could lead a horse to water, but maybe we should drown them or something.
We're reaching out, the pre-bid meeting, you know, he received a call this morning on the garage, pre-bid meeting, it was discussed, discusses a bunch of electrical contractors, usually they're subs to a general. Bunch of them had a deer-in-a-headlight look. There was one individual there from Merritt that was like, "Oh, yes, we've been a party to losing a bid because of this."
We're finding it's the specialty guys and those that have...
Yeah, because, I mean, I'm sure that the companies that, you know, that really would have won this bid, they lost $500,000 worth of business. I mean, that's a lot. So anyway, just, I don't know, keep up...
We're doing our best to reach out to them. It's, and a part of the unfortunate thing, even though we're reaching out to AGC and doing everything we can, a lot of the smaller guys are not members of the AGC.
Right.
So then they're not, you know, unless they're involved in public bidding a lot with agencies, they're still not hearing it. And all of a sudden, they decide to dive into it, they send a runner, they have a runner drop it off, what Dan or any of us are discussing with them, they're still not getting it, they're not seeing it on the form. Now on the form, it's bold, it's underlined, and it's capitalized, self-list. You know, we're doing everything we can. Obviously, it's not intentional, but it's part of the fallout.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I know from my standpoint, I do bids quite often, and in the beginning, it was difficult to remember to do that because it wasn't in bold, but now every contract I've seen lately has it in bold as self-list. I'm sorry it's costing the city money because of someone not being able to read, but at the same time, if they call you, Dan, you're going to help them fill out the form correctly.
Absolutely.
So at some points, I don't, some incidents, I don't have any sympathy for them, and some I do, but the bottom line is, we all know how to read, and just fill the dang thing out, and let's get it done correctly.
I can say with respect to this particular bid that's in front of you, I asked more than one bidder walking through the door. You remember the self-listing, right? Okay, more than one, and they all nodded, uh-huh, uh-huh.
Right.
We got one bidder out of seven that did it correctly.
It just baffles me that that can happen.
Questions? Okay, looking for a motion. It's not working. Go ahead, Mr. Lawson.
I'll move to approve item 6.1 for the award of the Garage Rehabilitation Project.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Excuse me. Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Carrigan to approve 6.1, is outlined by staff. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I guess we can vote now, go ahead and use the machine. Yes, you may. Okay, passed unanimously. You here for the next one, too?
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving on to 6.2, consideration and possible approval of the Fire Station Number Four Sewer Main Project. Bid number 1112-017-PWP-WA-2012-108 to A&amp;K Earth Movers. Go ahead.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Chris Cobb, Capital Projects Manager. Here again before you this afternoon is the Fire Station Four Sewer Main Project. This project was advertised on January 4th, nine bids were received and opened on January 19th. After review of the bids by staff, the low bidder, peak, was deemed non-responsive here again. Due to the changes in the NRS, they did not self-list. With that being said, the next low bidder was A&amp;K Earth Movers. Based on review of their bid, they did, are responsive, qualified bidder, and they are within the city's budget to do this project. Staff is requesting that you award this project to A&amp;K Earth Movers for $130,500.
Questions? Okay, seeing none, looking for a motion. See if it works. Mr. Carrigan.
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve Agenda Item 6.2. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. I was looking to see if we had other people.
Thank you, have a good day.
Thanks, gentlemen, appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to 6.3, consideration and possible acceptance of an Office of Traffic Safety Electronic Crash Reporting Equipment Grant for possible action. Mr. Kiefer.
Hello, Mayor, Council. Steve Kiefer, for the record, Chief of Police. Before you is consideration and approval of an Office of Traffic Safety grant in the amount of $14,016. There is a 20% match that will be in kind, so it is, will be a zero cost to the city. It will buy 13 Brazo handheld units for crash data retrieval and reporting for citations and for traffic accidents. Here to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions for Steve? Mr. Lawson.
How much extra time does it take the guys to do as far as this reporting? Is this just another way to enter the data into our system?
Well, currently, well, we have some devices, and we've had some data entry problems, but this is not new to us. So we have two different methods going on. We have the electronic version where the officer will scan the driver's license and enter data, and then it can download and it bypasses data entry. We don't have that many of those units, and that's what we're trying to get to. All the other officers will take an actual report, all on paper, that gets submitted to a supervisor for approval, and then goes to data entry where all of that is entered by data entry clerk.
So this will ultimately end up saving us some time and money?
Absolutely. Ironically, today, we went live with Spillman, which going from a paperless department to the degree, I guess maybe 10%, today we're starting 80 to 90%, and this is a portion of it that will assist even beyond that.
And because I'm a numbers guy, what are we talking about in time savings? Just the ballpark, I mean, we're going to save 10% time, 20%?
I couldn't guess right now. I couldn't guess right now. Overall, or just with these devices?
With the devices and overall with the paperless.
With these devices, probably 70%. They're quick. Overall, with the going paperless, 90%. Someone's still entering that information, it's an officer that's entering it, so it's not a complete analysis that you could use. Someone's still entering that data. It's a shift in the burden somewhat to the police officers, but for these devices, the time savings is high. It's at 70 to 80%.
So the point being, for $25,000 roughly, we are saving a heck of a lot more than that 25 grand.
Absolutely. In the long run, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Not looking for a motion. Mr. Lawson.
Okay, we'll just continue on. I move to approve item 6.3 for the acceptance of an Office of Traffic Safety Electronic Crash Reporting Equipment Grant.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, I heard Mr. Schmidt first, so it's been moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve 6.3. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Next is 6.4, consideration and discussion of approving a letter addressed to the Legislative Commission Subcommittee to Study the Allocation of Money Distributed from the Local Government Tax Distribution Account. Mr. Mayberry. Mr. Kronk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Adams, Mr. Driscoll. I'm Adam Mayberry, I'm the Community Relations Manager for the record. This item before you is approval of a letter addressed to the Legislative Commission Subcommittee to Study the Allocation of Money Distributed from the Local Government Tax Distribution Account. We'll refer to this committee as the C-Tax Committee from this point forward. This committee was formed as a result of Assembly Bill 71 in the last legislative session, and the purpose of this committee is to look at the distribution formulation of the C-Tax, and they will meet anywhere from five to six more times throughout the year, and then the end result will be, could be, a deliverable from this committee to the legislature in the next legislative session in February of 2013. That could make some or suggest some modifications to C-Tax in terms of the formulation, the distribution. It may make some substantial changes or may make no changes. And again, this would be a report that this committee would develop. So what we've done is we've prepared a letter with our issues. The chairwoman of this committee has asked for our issues on C-Taxes, and so we have done that, and Jeff will review the issues in the letter. And the chairwoman is Marilyn Kirkpatrick, and she represents Southern Nevada, North Las Vegas, and she has requested that all the local governments, cities and counties throughout the state endorse a letter to be submitted to this legislative committee with our issues. So these are some topics for discussion. They don't represent a bill draft request, they don't represent legislative language, they are merely our contribution to this discussion going forward. So with that, I'll have our Financial Services Director, Mr. Kronk, outline the content of the letter, and he'll open up for any questions.
Good afternoon. For the record, Jeff Kronk, Financial Services Director. Adam did a great job there surmising, summarizing what we're trying to accomplish with this, really focusing it on just three areas of concerns, if you will, that we have with the C-Tax formula right now. One, if there are any changes that are going to be considered, we're interested in, you know, keeping things revenue-neutral, if you will. You know, with devastating, you know, impacts that the recession has placed on all local governments, I think everybody realizes, everybody's hurting. And the problem with the C-Tax, if you will, it's just a pie. It's just a set pot of money that has to be distributed, so... So you're probably going to hear a lot during this process of the subcommittee testimony of, you know, we didn't get our fair share or whatnot. You're going to hear a lot of agencies saying that. I think we're interested in just, you know, maintaining what we have and not creating a situation, I think I listed in here in the letter, of creating winners and losers. You know, if you take it from one agency, that means another agency is going to have to, is going to gain and another one's going to lose, you know, that sort of thing. We're trying to avoid that. So that's point primary one. The second one, if you are going to make changes, let's focus going forward from here. Keep everything, you know, like I said, base neutral from, you know, where we are. We are where we are and let's just move forward. If we move forward, let's focus on growth. Urban growth is where it's been in the past and we expect that to be in the future. So if you are going to tweak it, tweak it according to where the growth is actually happening. Third main point is let's just kind of simplify this thing. There's probably just maybe a handful or, you know, maybe a couple of handfuls of people in the state that understand this distribution formula. So I think we're just recommending, I think a lot of folks would buy off onto just saying, let's simplify this a little bit, both in practice and theory, if you will. So with that, I mean, there's a lot of complexities to the C-Tax formula and we're going to be at the table and actually we just want to be a part of this discussion point. I did give, provide a spreadsheet, if you will, showing just with some phony numbers, the numbers don't mean anything, just how a proposed distribution would take place, keeping everybody whole going forward and then as growth occurs, splitting it accordingly. So with that, I'll answer questions.
Questions? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeff, is there any conversation out there at all about the mandate of keeping the 15 rural counties whole at minimums, minimum levels?
I think everything is going to be on the table. I do think this is going to be a comprehensive review. I did, you know, bring as an example, a lot of work that the Legislative, let's see who actually did this, Legislative Council Bureau actually put this together, just the history of how the C-Tax evolved and, you know, all the intricacies of the formula. And actually, I think it's a very good exercise because honestly, I think it's the first time that you can have a group of, you know, folks who are interested, anybody who's interested in this, in this process, to sit down and understand, you know, where it came from and, you know, the thought process that went into creating that complex formula. So to answer your question directly, I think everything is going to be on the table. Keeping the guaranteed versus the non-guaranteed structure is certainly under discussion and, you know, again, they did a great job at our last meeting about going through the history of why that evolved into what it is and why it may or may not be necessary. So to answer your question, I haven't heard anything specific and I don't think, I think as this process, you know, continues, we're going to hear very specific proposals coming out and that might be one of them, but it's certainly on the table.
Because that's, I know that doesn't affect us within the county, but it does affect the gross pie.
Absolutely.
I think that's kind of a cost shift, you know, to keep the counties, you know, whole, but yet when it's the other way around, when they're doing very, very well and we're not doing very well, it doesn't come back this direction.
As it stands, correct.
So I guess my comment, I understand you're, you know, keep everybody whole and don't raise any issues, but, you know, it's, the gas tax distribution, the sales tax distribution, I believe the city Sparks as an entity takes, you know, and your chart very clearly shows that we would generate only 12.4% of the sales tax, but we have 25% of the population for the county. And when the guaranteed minimums kick into place, that drops to 11.6% or thereabouts. You know the numbers better, but yes, I think we've gone as low as 11.6% of the distribution. So, you know, it's, we're the last ones on the list. I mean, we're the bottom line of this stuff and I think there's some argument to be said to standing up and actually saying, is this the correct way to go? I mean, especially now that we're talking about all these other agencies now are going to be going after the cities that are typically funded by the county. Now, the county doesn't want to fund them, now they're coming after the cities for money. And I think that we need to make very clear the situation that we have 25% of the populations of rural receiving 12% of the sales tax generated. So, thank you.
Questions? Mr. Ratty?
Again, I understand the wisdom of coming in with a no winners, no losers approach as well, but I do think, it almost felt like it needed an introductory paragraph that's talking about how we aren't being able to sustain our services in the current system and how the work that we've done around changing our dynamic from being primarily residential community to adding more business isn't then resulting in our ability to have enough police officers on the street, for example. And so it's almost felt to me like it just needs an introductory thing that acknowledges that we are struggling as a municipality to provide the services, you know, to gain the revenue from taxes after investments have been made in our community. And I know it's a little complicated because part of that's property tax, but the truth of the matter is we can't, we can't make it. And, you know, I probably am the only one who would say that the pie needs to be bigger up here, but I'm not advocating that we put that in this letter, but I am saying that I do think we need to say that we're not able to make it on the revenues that we're currently provided, that we're not able to provide the level of service that is keeping pace with the safety needs of our community with the, you know, basically with all of our basic needs as a municipality.
Absolutely, we can add that. And to that point too, my hope as part of this five or six week, you know, process or meeting process that we're going to be participating in is presenting that case, if you will. This is really meant as just kind of an introductory letter saying here, here's a summary, you know, kind of a succinct way of placing what our concerns are. But yeah, I absolutely am hopeful that we're going to be able to state our case, if you will, in a much more thorough PowerPoint and all kinds of interesting, you know, facts and figures and tell them a little bit or a lot about what we're actually seeing in Sparks. I think what you're going to find, every agency will be doing that.
Right. Well, I'd like to see at least a little bit of that in this letter.
Yeah, we can certainly add that.
Questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the letter with a little bit stronger language up front about the needs that the city is facing and do you want to, have any specific comments? Councilman Schmidt?
I agree with you that if we put a metric in there just in basis of population, very clear metric that, you know, here is the example of Washington County, real life example, we're 25% of the population, 23% and this is the end of line and just let that be a talking point and see where that goes.
So then additionally emphasizing the percentage of sales tax that we receive versus the percentage of population that we represent and approve the rest of the letter as it is.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve the letter as outlined by staff with the amendments. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Thanks, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Next is 6.5. Consideration and possible adoption of Resolution 3214 supporting a coordinated and cooperative multi-jurisdictional approach to transportation improvements in Northern Nevada and TransSierra communities. Mr. Martini?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Up here with me today is Mr. Hasty, who will like to discuss this possible resolution with you for coordinated infrastructure improvements in Northern Nevada and the TransSierra counties. With that, I'll turn it over to Carl.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Carl Hasty. I'm the district manager for the Tahoe Transportation District, which is a by-state agency in the Tahoe region and we are developing a series of capital transportation projects as well as run transit out of the South Shore. I appreciate the opportunity to have this item before you today and your consideration of it. Given the state of transportation funding and where this country is going, I'm very concerned for the region and why we've been talking with staff as well as with WashORTC and looking at the larger region, understanding how we are tied together economically as well as through our transportation corridors. This resolution in front of you today and the whole concept here of a TransSierra type of transportation coalition is framing just that. What we've learned at Tahoe is that we have more to gain by working together collaboratively and leveraging each other than we do on our own. And this concept is about exploring the future of transportation and our transportation system and how we are going to get it on the ground and what it means to our communities. It's as simple as that. We've had a lot of interest around. It's on WashORTC's agenda this Friday. Douglas County's already passed it, says it's my own board and several other organizations up at the lake and we are looking to move forward on this and have had discussions with California jurisdictions as well who have expressed interest. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Hasty? Mr. Carrigan?
What exactly are you looking for from the council? I don't, I read it, but it's kind of vague.
And it's intended to be right now, more of a statement of transportation infrastructure is important to our communities. And what we are missing in this region, and if you've been following any of what's going on in Congress, for example, is a unified voice coming out of local communities. There isn't one on transportation at all. And so at a minimum, we're talking-
Isn't that what we have the RTC for?
It is. And, but the RTC is, folks are used to hearing from regional transportation commissions, local governments is where these projects make a difference and in those communities where these projects make a difference. And so local government support, even though you may have a regional RTC and your voice lending to that, is extremely important in that way. It's similar for us up at the lake where we've got six counties and two states in which we work together on that and that's what we've learned up there. So this is to address by starting to say, first of all and foremost, is that transportation is important to us and investment in transportation infrastructure is important to us. From there, we will be continuing to work together through the RTC and through various discussions about a game plan and how we address our common interests when it comes to transportation in this region.
So it seemed to me that you would want to do that first and then come for our support, wouldn't you?
I'm sorry?
It seemed to me that you would want to get all that together first and then come to us and say, can we support that? Does that make sense? Because I don't know what I'm, you know, I don't know what the resolution supports. Is it a good idea?
Right now-
I don't know what the idea is. You see my quandary? I don't know what the idea is.
Well, the idea is here is working together. It's as simple as that. As their interest in working together to create and support transportation in the larger region. That is really the basic assumption here as a starting place and getting, again, a unified voice and interest.
Okay, because I didn't think we needed a, you know, resolution for that. You could just come to us and we say, yeah, we're interested. That's my only point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Any other questions? Mr. Lawson?
So, just so I understand, I had a meeting with Mr. Harris last week and he explained this in more detail to me and I thought part of this was to see about an inner local agreement with California and Nevada plus-
That's correct.
-all the other cities and counties.
That's correct. And that's what, we have been working with the California jurisdictions. I have a meeting, for example, on 27th here with the new director of the Eldorado County Transportation Commission, who's extremely interested in this. Met the other week with Placer County Transportation Planning Agency, extremely interested in this. Also discussed with Caltrans and with NDOT and the other jurisdictions up and down the 395 corridor who are very interested in this. The resolution itself is really just becomes a more formal statement about that interest and helps to build that momentum that is necessary in order to develop the plans and work together.
I think there's a lot of good ideas in the literature that I saw with Mr. Harris last week. I mean, a resolution, great, but I'm more of an action guy. Let's get this thing moving if we're going to do something about it.
And I agree. And perhaps I'm stumbling around here unfortunately, but my experience up at Lake Tahoe anyway, when we have that kind of complex political jurisdiction is these kinds of support from policy boards are extremely important for staff and working together to develop something and be able to create an expectation with that policy board and to come back. And that's what our experience has been and what I'm basing this off of is just developing a concept and expressing an interest at this point in time.
Well, I'm going to support your motion, but having done business in the Lake Tahoe area since 1997, it's not a good business model for everyone else. They're anti-growth, they're anti-about everything except I'm here now, so you can close the doors. And that's not any way to run a railroad in my mind. But if that's what it takes to get something moving with Lake Tahoe and the surrounding jurisdictions, I'm all in favor.
Very good.
Questions? Mr. Ratty?
Well, and I guess, because you sort of brought up, which is my concern, is what are you anticipating and asking from our staff, given that everybody's stretched a little thin everywhere right now? What do you see as the next steps in terms of?
What I see is that what we are facing right now, for example, with the federal reauthorization of the transportation bill, what that means to WashORTC, to the city's projects and this region, same for our own, is that is one area in commonality in terms of interest and say-so. Where are we going in the state as well as nationally and how we're going to fund our projects? What's the long-term prospects? These are things of interest that a coalition in here and working with the city through the RTC can help to craft what is, we need to discuss and to put together and bring back to this body, legislature nationally. My experience with this, and I know what you're talking about with the land use, for example, up at Lake Tahoe, when it came to the environmental improvement program for Lake Tahoe and all the capital improvements to improve Lake Clarion and the like, it was through methods like this that we actually created the kind of partnership that's brought over a billion dollars to Lake Tahoe for those kind of capital improvements. We need to be doing a similar thing here and I, this is, the next steps then are looking at what's in front of us and where we're going to be projecting for the next 10 years and how we get there.
So I heard you say working through RTC, so I'm, were you thinking and maybe it's, maybe asking our staff would be the better way to go about this? Are you thinking then through the 2030 planning process that you'll add on to that process, a regional approach or, how are you going to manage this?
Well, John's left in the room. We have one person.
I hear it over there.
Sorry. We have one person. Our contact with RTC, we also have planning staff and then Mr. Crutts and myself. So you're right, there's not a lot of bodies to throw at this. However, I believe that in the very least, if this resolution is simply a statement that we support it as a city. We have worked with RTC for years. As these issues come through, RTC Sparks staff will be involved as well and through that, this council will be informed of happenings. I think a coalition on any size, particularly with respect to seeking federal funding someday, if we ever go on an Olympics, could come in extraordinarily handy. And the Sierras.
And a good illustration of that, if I may add, for that, is we're already all working together on this potential Olympic bid for 2022 and that is a coalition in and of itself. And so it is demonstrative of the type of thing that we're talking about here that says, this is a good idea with or without an Olympics, because our connectivity and what that means is extremely important. So John has been involved with that effort, RTC, we have been involved with that effort in getting the city of Truckee involved in that. And I think right now, that's probably our best mechanism in terms of working together on this with everybody's limitations.
Julia, to further answer your question, the resolution does not obligate any staff or resources. It is simply an agreement to play, if you will.
Yeah.
And as a staff, I think we're always supportive of coordinated efforts.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just shows the unity of the region.
Exactly.
That everybody's on board with doing stuff, trying to appropriate money for highways and things. The more we go back there with, the better we are.
Thank you.
Questions? Any other questions? Comments? Go ahead, Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first question, John, you guys are okay with this even with your limited staff?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilman Schmidt, if I can continue, it's because it will, in my opinion, most of this will be done through the Regional Transportation Commission, of which we have various memberships and roles within there.
My, I support the resolution based upon what you guys, you know, want to do and the concepts of, you know, getting to the Olympics and getting a regional plan together for things like that. My concern on this is what happens after the fact and, you know, three to four months from now, I get a phone call from Senator or Representative from Washington DC and say, you know, we got this application for this new government agency in Nevada, in California to be ran and you guys have a resolution here saying you approve it. And if that is any kind of mechanism, if this is a mechanism, go that direction, I think that needs to be disclosed now, that that's what you want to do. think that needs to be disclosed now, that that's what you want to do, is create another government agency here to go and do that. Any issues that involve funding from Washington DC or matching funds or anything else like that is clearly discussed with this council before that is even considered, because, you know, if, this is, what you're telling me, and I'll make sure it's clear, is it's just giving you support that you guys can sit down and start working on things together, that there is no financial commitment, that you're asking for the city, nor will be coming to us for, that you're aware of at this time.
Speaking from my perspective, we are not seeking some super agency. We have enough agencies. This is a collaborative effort, and yes, anything else that would require any kind of action that would come as a consequence of this would be back before everyone's respective bodies.
And I understand that, and I think that's the intent, I think Mr. Lawson also pretty clearly that there's a lot of super agencies that evolve out of Lake Tahoe with good intentions, and I don't want this to be a good intention that's gone bad. If there's, you know, if there's any talk at all of creating another government agency to apply for funds for the federal government to use on behalf of the citizens of Sparks, I'm not going to support it.
Councilman Schmidt, to answer your question, nothing I've seen to date with regard to this resolution obligates our staff or our funding resources at this time.
Thank you.
Further questions? Comments? Looking for a motion. Ms. Ratty?
Resolution number?
Six point five.
I move to approve Resolution 3214.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Schmidt, to approve Resolution 3214. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, go ahead.
For what it's worth, the resolution is simply a designation of intent. It's certainly not binding, nor do I believe, from a legal standpoint, it would obligate the city to do anything. I think it's just, it's a non-binding declaration by the city council.
Thanks, Mr. Attorney. Okay, seeing no further discussion, please vote. Pass is three to one. Mr. Carrigan, no. Okay, thanks, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Next is six point six, first reading.
Bill number 2639, in order to submitting Chapter 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code, admitting Section 20.05 definitions, and adding 20.53.060, mobile vendors to outdoor sales and display, and providing other matters properly related thereto.
This is the first reading of Bill number 2639. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, February 27, 2012. Mr. Carrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. Armando, real quick, just for the record on this, how close is our ordinance matchup to Reno's? I mean, since I think some of the people that have these mobile vendors come over here from Reno, is it pretty close?
It's pretty close. I think at the meeting where we have the public hearing, Jim Rundle will specifically compare the two ordinances and let you know where there are areas of differences and where there are areas of commonality, but I would say overall, it's pretty close.
Yeah, because I, it kind of looks like it was the hours that you can stay in one spot and look for-
The hours that you can stay in one location, for example, is, are the same in the two ordinances.
And the distance?
Distance away from-
Distance varies, in part because of the differences between downtown Reno in particular and Sparks more generally. In Sparks, we're proposing 300 feet, in Reno, it's 100 feet.
And this was a good process. We met with 25 or 30 of the vendors, did we not?
Yeah, we had a meeting with, I would say, 20 to 25 vendors, maybe 30 people, but there were perhaps a couple of people from, you know, one vendor.
Yeah, and they're pretty much on board with what we're doing?
Yes, I think we went standard by standard, and we had, you know, we had some discussion about the, how long you could stay in one location, provision in particular, but overall, we didn't hear any real objections to what we were proposing.
Okay. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, next, six point seven is the first reading.
General Ordinance for all the ordinance submitting Chapter 20.13 of the Sparks Municipal Code, to change the expiration date related to the cessation of a use established by a special use permit from six months to two years, providing other matters properly related thereto.
This is the first reading for Bill number 2640, public hearing. And second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, February 27, 2012. Agenda items six point eight is the first reading.
Bill number 2641, a general ordinance rezoning real property owned by David Masterson, from R16 Residential Single Family to PO Professional Office, on a site approximately .18 acres in size, generally located 924 Pyramid Way, Sparks, Nevada, and providing other matters properly related thereto.
This is the first reading of Bill number 2641. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, February 27, 2012. Okay, moving on, we have comments. Comments from the city council, the city manager? Anyone? Okay, public comments, I have one. Kathy Brandhorst, you have here to speak on six point three, but you were too late to speak, and it had already gone by before you got here.
Yes.
So we have you down for public comments. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. As a matter of fact, I just got out of the meeting with Washoe County. My name is Kathy Brandhorst, Lisa Marie Presley, John Benay Ramsey, John Steele, and I'm also the United States President. And I have been elected for the next four years. I just wanted to let you know, I wrote down there were 457 bodies found as they are working on the construction in front of the Sundance Motel. What is going on is these bodies were found underneath the streets because of the hills. We had a great big giant hill, and they wanted that hill knocked down, and this is where they found the bodies. They're all from the Sundance Motel. We had the US military, 550 men, and we also had, oh, excuse me, we also had people moving into the rooms at the Sundance Motel, and we're all US-born. And I just wanted to let you know, the population is going down because of the mission. The mission is still having the problems with the women. We counted 27 this morning. I do work with them a little bit in the daytime, and then I also work with the Washoe County a little bit. And now I'm letting you know, the problem is still existing with Gene. He is a police officer. He is 11 years old. And Scott is a security officer, and he is seven years old. And their sister Sabrina is nine years old. And they were all tested. I was watching Channel 20, and they were saying that they are not quite as old as they thought they were. They're younger. And these kids are trying to support themselves because the father refuses to pay child support. And they, and he has stated on Channel 20, he wants them all dead. And he will not pay his child support, and the mother has suffered also. She has been beaten. She's been filled with bullet holes, just like the children, shotgun holes and bomb fragments have also been set. And there has been shooting right after dark. And these are shooting down the population in the street near the Sundance Motel, because I also saw a shooting take place at the grocery store. I can see it from my window at the Sundance Motel. And these people do not pay rent with, from the mission, and they do not-
Kathy, you're going to wrap it up.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
One other announcement I forgot to make, I wanted to congratulate Mr. Adams, our city attorney, who was elected to the Cambridge Who's Who for municipal attorneys. Is that what it was for, Chad? I can't remember exactly, but is that what it was?
Yeah.
Well, congratulations. Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Okay, no further business. We're adjourned.